I think I assumed it was Bill because it's in his seat.
Yeah.
I'm serious, okay. That's a call that's to the county legislature council meeting. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, please call the roll. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Hello.
Okay, Mr. Eichelberg?
Here.
Mr. Framp?
Here.
Mr. Gabori?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Here.
Mr. Soms? Eight here, one absent. Thank you. At this time, are there any residents or property owners that wish to speak for the council?
I read Alfred's Twenty-Sixth. I'll make this very brief. I was going through some of the papers I had on Stonegate buildings and I thought this was a very interesting conflict by the developer. It goes back into July 2009. The God knows sent a memo to all residents, quote, "It is opposition that the terms of leases and the rules and regulations of Stonegate buildings are part of a pattern between our residents, us, and the Connecticut Department of Cultural Protection. They are not business saving for individuals." So, I know this is just a very interesting thing because they rely heavily on Sony PNC to change the rules. And then the second thing is, it was an interesting article from the staff, Stanford Advocate of Level Twenty-Four concerning the president of God Homes. And I'd like to give you a copy if you'd be at your convenience.
I'll take that.
Okay. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other resident or property owners that wish to speak? Mr. Cherry?
Hi, I'm Mr. Cherry, five hundred and five. I'm chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not speaking with regards to that. I'm on the Development Commission. I'm not speaking with regards to that. I'm on the Water and Fish Control Authority. I'm not speaking with regards to that. I do routinely look through correspondence that's submitted to the town and submitted to the town council. In my review of that correspondence, I noted that there was a new contract for administrators, the Ledger Board of Education, the Administrator Association. And when I read through it, I found what I considered to be some errors or questions. And I was concerned because my understanding of the state law, which may be flawed, is that prior to negotiating a contract about eight months before the budget time that we deal with that contract in thirty days prior to the start of the negotiation, that a financial authority of the town, which I believe to be the town council and the Board of Education, would get together to talk about the bounds of that negotiation or, in my terms, what can the town afford. My review of correspondence and IQM2 doesn't show that that meeting never took place. So, I would figure you would look out for my interests as a taxpayer. You were never given the opportunity to do that in that concern. My other concern is the military was going to get a 1.8 percent pay raise this year, President Capit at 1 percent. I don't want to sound like Harold Morris, but in defense of Harold, who's not here, those who live on a fixed income got 1.7 percent from Social Security and 1.7 percent on military retirement if they had one. Not everybody even gets that cost of living. Some people's pensions have no cost of living. It does my wife's who did not have pension from school security. So, I question two and a half percent per year for our highest paid people who work for us in support of our schools. Two and a half percent sounds like a lot. But then when you read further, the stipends, they used to be periodic, seven years, twelve years, twenty-five years, and now annual. Okay, they're a hundred dollars less or a hundred fifty dollars less, but it's an annual stipend instead of a periodic stipend. The other thing that was changed that I saw was the contribution to what I call a 401K plan, it's probably a 457, the deferred income going into a retirement savings account. The town's contribution went from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars. There were a lot of changes in healthcare. I'll be honest, I'm not a healthcare guru. I don't know. I understand health savings accounts as far as a terminology, but my thought is that's probably a great even for the town and the members of the union. And I'm sure they didn't give away the farm and I'm sure we didn't get everything we wanted. But the other concerns, I'd ask you when you discuss this contract that you looked at. The third thing is, since the time the contract was forwarded on the fourteenth of November to the town clerk, there's been multiple changes. I don't see that the negotiating committee met, and maybe there wouldn't be a public record of that, but I don't see that the Board of Ed revoted for a contract even though you have multiple copies and correspondence correcting errors. So, I would say the board forwarded you a contract on November fourteenth and everything else is nice, but it's not official in my mind. Just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Are there any other resident or property owners that wish to speak at this time? Hearing noncommittee commissions or boards, any comments? Hearing noncomments, the town councilors? If I might start, I usually go last, but I would like to go first. I would like to, again, congratulate Mr. France on his election as our state representative or a part of our town state representative. But I would like to thank him for his service. Every town council needs a detailed person and Mike was certainly our detailed person and you will be really missed, probably especially by me, but I'm sure the rest of the council will miss you as well. But thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Any other councilors have comments?
I do have actually one more. No, it's on your correspondence, so go right ahead.
As Chairman Davis acknowledged, this is my last town council meeting unless she has a meeting between now and the sixth of January, which is when I've submitted my letter of resignation effective, as I take the oath of office as state representative on the Senate. It has been an honor and a privilege. I mean, you hear those words, but it really has truly been an honor for me to serve as the resident of Ledger for the last three years and also as the chair of finance. I've learned a lot and I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge Sharon Wadecki, who I spent the first two years on this council with and really was the person that taught me what I know about town finance. She had twelve years, I believe, of experience at that time and knew more about finance than probably most have forgotten in our town. And I relied on her substantially, put together the two budgets any time that I wanted to. Make a change to the budget, I always went to her first to say, "This is what I'm proposing. What do you think?" And in each case, she gave her assessment, a comment, but didn't expect me to have to do what she recommended. And after we had a discussion, she always supported what we were doing because we had that dialogue and understood where I was coming from. And I thank her for that help because I carried forward in the third year where she wasn't there and I had a brand-new finance committee walking through the budget process. I am looking forward to being the state representative. I've spent the last several weeks starting to get my feet wet for that. We had our freshman orientation, first day of freshman orientation, felt like going back to college yesterday. The second day is next Tuesday. And so, you learn the secret handshake and all those good things about the Capitol. But I just wanted to thank the current members of the council, the former members, the two that are no longer in the council, for their assistance in making the job a pleasure. It really was. And thank the town for their support and making me now their state representative moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other councilors have comments? Entertained the motion to approve the minutes of November twelfth and nineteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. All of your communication is on IQM2. And I did have one other piece of communication I wanted to mention. We did get a notice of a 2015 municipal budget workshop at the CCM, held by CCM on January tenth, which is a Saturday at the Crown Plaza. And Fred and I are going to attend. We certainly invite anybody else on the council that would like to attend. The topic is municipal budgets. Anybody from the Board of Ed that would like to come as well. It's free because we are a member of, the town is a member, so I just wanted to mention that. Referrals, or I don't believe we have any. Some committee liaison and liaison reports. Mr. Eichelberg?
Administration met earlier this evening. We moved forward several appointments and reappointments, which are all on our agenda for later.
Thank you. Any questions for administration? Finance, Mr. France?
Finance committee met last week in a regular meeting. We also had a special meeting earlier this evening. All the agenda items from those two meetings are on the agenda, with the exception of the schedule for the budget sessions. We approved the budget sessions for the town on March tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth from one to six o'clock. The schedule will be propagated to the town department heads by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for finance? IP, Mr. Dombrowski?
IP committee met last week. We reviewed the MIS director's report and the other items on the grant application or the reimbursement for grant application, the expenditure for services for EOC, which is on the IPM, and that concludes my report.
I should mention, you would find this interesting. Today, I couldn't send any emails from my email address and it turns out I had been put into the spam folder. So, it appears I'm emailing maybe too much. I don't know, but anyway, that's what happened. I found out why and we can discuss that in detail maybe at your next meeting.
That's okay. Last week, I was locked out of IPM for a security violation.
Oh, wow. Do you have a liaison report, Mr. Dombrowski?
Yeah, also, we played this bit last week. A couple of items that we discussed are IP on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you. Liaison reports. Start on the right. Anything?
This is in reference to the Board of Education meeting of December third. Meeting began with the election, actually reelection of officers Julia Cronin and Stephanie Calhoun as chair and secretary of the board. Is it actually corresponding secretary or secretary? Secretary, thank you. Under the report of the superintendent, Mrs. Patterson mentioned the high-quality performance of the crucible done by our drama club and that coach, Mr. Hammond, is also the choral director, has been commended by the state organization of music teachers for his effectiveness as a teacher and director. There was an excellent presentation by the Ledger High School robotics team related to the upcoming season, included a demonstration of last year's entry at work and a video on the task selected for the competition last year. Under board comments, the National Honor Society induction ceremony was especially well-done. Committee and liaison, the facilities committee received a general school facilities update at last meeting. Also, a third issue regarding the LHS boilers materialized during the Thanksgiving weekend and they were all being resolved, I think, as part of the same work. Business manager reported that a new office secretary has been hired and that next year's budget's being developed at this time. Under communications, the secretary referenced the letter from Mrs. Davis to Mrs. Cronin. Under information items, there was a brief review of the AP Spanish text, which is the literature portion of course. And then a report more extensive by Mr. Geneva, the director of student services for Ledger Public Schools, on issues related to special education budget and other matters. Just to choose a few, three hundred and seventy-three students were receiving services as of October first of this year, which is an increase of nine students over last year. The number changes frequently with the total increasing by four over Thanksgiving break. Mr. Geneva emphasized that the numbers don't tell the whole story. The level of impact is a more significant factor. Also, he mentioned that the district social workers had a substantial positive impact on our students. He mentioned that the informal state estimate on what we might perceive through excess cost is currently seventy-five percent, but that it seems to change with each conversation. And that was a point of emphasis that the costs are unpredictable. He requesting a point four speech pathologist added for next year. Emphasized that approximately twenty students at each elementary school require this service and we have only one speech pathologist on staff, which is certainly far from optimal. Calendars were established for the board for next year and several field trips for our music department were presented and approved. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. France, liaison report?
Building committee. Building committee meeting met on the first of December, went through review of the asbestos removal project. Where facility supervisor Sam Kilpatrick reported that we had granted a bid waiver for Miscare Quality to provide engineering services for that work. Expect to have a cost estimate by the end of last week. I'm not sure if that came through, but it will be followed by RFPRQ to the town council. Since we haven't seen that, my guess is the estimate hasn't come through yet. So, that will be the next step in the process after Miscare Quality makes the determination. There was a brief discussion of, reported on the facilities project and Chairman Justice emphasized that elected the point of town officials, respected project advocacy once the referendum called. And Superintendent Patterson provided overview of the presentations that have been made by the administration and Silver Petricelli. And Chairman Justice said, until the referendum, the building committee has no further action. Once the referendum passes, there is substantial work, assuming the referendum passes, there will be substantial work to finish up the requirements, the suite package. Algenites Water Project, they're continuing the well closeout. Project remains under budget and even with the additional scope of work that was done, which included upgrading an access road and retirement of the abandoned well. Finally, was a discussion of wastewater treatment facility, which was covered earlier this evening on the bond amount. But the basic discussion was concerning the scope of it, which was presented earlier during the town meeting, as well as who would provide oversight and the building committee voted to assign oversight to the WPCA for that project. For the police headquarters facility, there was continued discussion on the plans related to easements, discussion with property adjacent to the property owners, as well as the septic system design, Kirk and Gray associated with that. The change since that meeting was we received conditional approval of the A or B septic design from Ledge Light. We still have to monitor the water through the wet season, which is February through May. At the end of that, will be a final determination of the A or B decision based on what we see in the water. And the plan was to move forward. Mayor, did they meet last night? They were supposed to meet last night.
Yes, I have a report on the meeting.
Okay, so the mayor will give the meeting last night that I was not able to attend. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. France? Liaison reports on my left. Mr. Marshall?
The inland wetlands and water courses met December second. The church has voted to utilize the old town hall as the distribution facility for the town's food locker. It will be the Ledger food locker. The town and the church are developing a lease agreement, which will be made available to the social services board for review and then forwarded to the town council for approval, including the scheduling of a public hearing as required by state statute. I attended a meeting this week with an architect hired by the town of Waterford to discuss plans for a regional ACO facility. It's been a while since I had my first meeting. Right now, this involves Waterford and East Lime, who already have a combined facility and jurisdiction. The town of Monville, that would be the host community, ourselves potentially and potentially also Preston. We're looking at a project that would be built at the Corrigan directional facility, hopefully with much of the construction because it would be very simple construction, block construction, fencing with a small office area, which all is within the purview and all within the abilities of the inmates. So, the next step is for them to prepare more detailed plans, estimates, and then I will come forward to the council. Hopefully, you know, all of our towns are involved in budgets at this time, so the understanding is that we would bring that forward as part of our budgets if there was costs required and proceed from there. Again, it's all under discussion and it's part of the continued activity to determine what the role of the town and also the ability to regionalize many of our services. Again, one of the main questions is we will still have an ACO. There's a requirement that we have an ACO. This would really just be to provide the facility. You can imagine there would be overlapping there because the inmates would take care of the cleaning of the cages, feeding of the animals, and there'd also hopefully be some cross-support in terms of when animals are brought there, you know, whoever happened to be there on duty could take care of processing those animals when people come up to pick those up. So, there's details to be worked out, but again, there is a lot of enthusiasm certainly from Waterford and East Lime on behalf of this project. And that's my report.
Are there any questions for Mayor? Mayor Eichelberg? Mayor Eichelberg?
Woo-hoo! Whoa!
I'm going to slurp.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, given the proposed location of the combined ACO, has there been any thought given to the recidivism rate of the offending animals?
If it were earlier in the day, I'd probably have a quick response.
That's a tough word to get out, you know.
Boy, I'm really impressed. Any other questions for the mayor?
Mayor, will there be a Friday town meeting concerning the ACO facility with all parties concerned at one time in one place?
Right now, the meeting is being held specifically with just the only people at the meeting, with CEOs and the architect. I have, the ACOs were each invited to go and look at the plans. It's been a while since we've met. It's been probably six months. I will be meeting shortly with our ACO and to bring her up to speed, which I've been doing, you know, I did the last time I had plans. And as far as getting all the parties together, I don't think we're at that point yet, but certainly before any action's taken, you know, I'm not going to take any unilateral action on this. I'm going to get all the information. There's some questions about the cost. The costs were all over the place. You know, if you look at it just in terms of X square feet, you come up with a number that I told you frankly, we would not be interested in. But if you look at something that's a simple block building with, you know, with inmate labor being provided, it could be quite economical and there are examples of that. I think I want to be at a point, and again, I don't have control of this, this is not my meeting. It's not for me to propose having an all-hands meeting, but I think it will be appropriate at the right time and we will have that meeting. But in the meantime, I am keeping everyone informed on where we are and up until this week, there was nothing really to tell anyone.
Whatever's kind of rolling the process, don't want to miss that one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, let's see, there is no old business. Would anybody like to amend the agenda on the new business? Our consent calendar is, I'm seeing we have some appointments.
I'll move the consent calendar. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Administration, Mr. Eichelberg, item number three.
I move to appoint Mr. Corey Reed, Republican of Twenty Chidley Way, Ledger, as an alternate member to the inland wetlands and water courses commission for a two-year term ending October thirty-one, 2016, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Peeler.
Second.
End discussion. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Item number four.
Move to appoint Mr. Craig Biggar, Republican of Fifty-two Eagle Ridge Drive, Gales Ferry, as an alternate member to the IWWC for a two-year term ending October thirty-one, 2016, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Leach.
Second.
End discussion. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Item number six. This is number five. Item number five.
Okay. Move to recommend the town, this shouldn't be a recommend, right? Move to appoint Mrs. Ellen Fossum, Republican of Seven Thirty-two Long Cove Road, Gales Ferry, Ledger, as an alternate member to the historic district commission for a five-year term ending December sixth, 2019, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Durlem.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. End discussion. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Item number six.
Now we're on six.
Thank you.
Move to appoint Mr. Thomas Casabria, Republican of Thirteen Devonshire Drive, Gales Ferry, as an additional member to the Board of Assessment Appeals in accordance with CGS nine dash one-nine-nine-C.
Second.
Discussion. This appointment is during the period of evaluation. We can add additional members to lighten the load and that's what this appointment is.
And Madam Chair, as with all of these appointments, you know, we get to do a lot of these, so just again, thank you to all the people who are willing to volunteer their time to the very many needed commissions and committees in the town.
We put out the word that we were going to have two openings on Parks and Recs and we had five people step forward, so we're in doing well. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Finance committee, Mr. France, item number seven.
Make the motion to approve letter of director to the mayor for the preparation of fiscal year 2015, 2016 budgets containing the draft date of November nineteenth, 2014. In addition, approve the letter of director to the Board of Education for the preparation of fiscal year 2015, 2016 budgets containing the draft date of November nineteenth, 2014.
Second.
Discussion.
Just briefly, I'll cover this standard format. It's always been part of the budget letter directive. As part of the finance committee comments, there were three major areas that we highlighted as concerns going forward and potential impacts on the budget. The first being the state budget. As we heard not that long ago, after the election, there was about a hundred million dollar deficit that was identified by the governor's budget office. The challenge, and they took action to remediate about half of that through direct action. Unfortunately, the Office of Fiscal Analysis, which is a nonpartisan group, has assessed that only, instead of fifty-five million, which was estimated by the OPM, the governor's budget's on loan, about twenty-seven million was actually remediated. The challenge, as we know from many times when you start with a budget deficit early And if the OPM, Governor's Budget Office, is estimating the corrections they're making, $55 million, only giving $27 million worth of credit for that work, we do have some issues going forward. In addition to that, the projected budget deficit, assuming no changes in the next biennial, is about $2.8 billion. So, those that remember, four years ago, it was about $3.4 billion. They had a substantial tax increase and restructuring of the state's budget. We're still at $2.8 billion. So, we have some challenges ahead of us in the current fiscal year as well as the next biennial. So, while everybody across the legislature is committed and promised to hold municipal funding harmless, there comes a point in time where that may not be possible. We don't have any commitments to do that, but just awareness that that is not going to be an easy budget year. Second, two things were, well, highlighted. Unemployment was a continuing thing. It is improving. It's still about two to three years before we get back to where we were, before the recession started back in '07 timeframe. But it is marginally improving. The two big things coming up, one was the increase in healthcare costs that we've seen over the last several years and a substantial increase in the current year budget. The, if I look back over the last 10 years or so, the 10, 12 years, we've seen about a 4.5% average increase, which is manageable. The challenge is, over the last four years, it's been almost 13%. So, while, over time, it's been a reasonable increase, recent years have shown a different pattern. The good news is that with the substantial increase based on last year's usage, and for those who don't know, we're self-insured. So, we function effectively as the insurance company paying bills. Many people have asked me, would it be better to get an insurance company to write the policy? Our consultants said that would cost us, on average, about 8% more a year. 2% of that 8% is the profit the insurance company would have, and the other 6% would be essentially the shift of risk from the town to the insurance company. So, in general, over time, it is always cheaper to insure yourself. However, as I said, in recent times, that has been a driver of our town budget. Finally, looking forward, we have the police facility and the school improvement project. Police facility's been approved. $6.75 million. School improvement project coming up currently on January 20th, with a total cost of about $65 million with the town shares and the reimbursement rate that's been projected by $24 million. And that increase amounts to, at its peak, I believe, 2019, about a $2 million increase in the tax rate. So, those kinds of factors, we both recommended to the Board of Ed and to the Mayor's, are putting together budgets to put that factor in, to understand that in the near term, the residents are going to have a substantial increase based on needed capital improvements in the town. But our factors are going forward with annual budget increases potentially, and that the town is, that just needs to be considered.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Dombrowski? Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caporti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
Make a motion to transfer $1,800 from account 210-20305-58915, undesignated to account 210-20701-57300. Emergency management new equipment to provide for upfront funding of reimbursable neck nuclear safety emergency program, NSCP purchases.
Second.
Questions being made and seconded. Discussion.
Very briefly, the, under the nuclear safety emergency program, there's a $15,000 annual grant available to the town to make needed upgrades for equipment that are related to being within the affected zone of the Millstone Nuclear Power Plant. Some of, what we used this for last year was to put on chains, automatic chains, on the senior center van to provide for the potential of having to provide emergency transportation for seniors that needed to leave in the case of a snow incident during an emergency. That was provided as grant. This year, the, I believe this is for communications equipment, $1,800. We'll leave about $6,000 left under the current year's grant once this is approved. The remaining, the $15,000. And I've talked with Rush Shaw, Administrator Emergency Services, they're still looking at what potential use of that remaining grant funding would be. And that will come back before the Finance Committee for approval.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caporti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine.
Motion to appropriate $16,200 to account 210-40111-58205, property maintenance, Gales Ferry Landing, for the removal of asbestos and installation of a dumpster enclosure at Gales Ferry Landing, with funding to come from Gales Ferry Landing rent revenue that exceeds the general fund budget of revenue.
Looking to friendly amend that?
We need a second.
Yep, second.
All right, at the Finance Committee, being based on correspondence with Mayor Assistant Mark Bancroft, he's not ready to proceed with the asbestos work. He still needs to get two more quotes for that. So, we're only going to go forward with the enclosure, which was $4,600. So, we'll amend the motion to appropriate $4,600 instead of $16,200, remove the language for concerning the asbestos removal and only the enclosure.
Okay, so this will be a friendly amendment? Or is it $4,000?
$4,600.
Yeah, it was friendly.
Didn't sound very friendly.
It was friendly.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caporti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10.
Make a motion to grant a bid waiver to New England Fire Equipment and Apparatus Corporation in amount of up to $9,458.12 to complete repairs on R12.
Second.
Discussion.
This is work that was performed in September of 13. The thought by the fire company was that this would be work done under warranty. Unfortunately, it was not. One of the, part of the discussion at Finance concerning this particular issue was that we are now having to pay for expenditure that was made in the past fiscal year in the current fiscal year. And it's really put a crimp on the budget for the fire company, the town, at almost $10,000. And the latest estimate is just over $10,000, additional repair bills that came in last week. The reason we're doing a bid waiver is because the work is only performed by one company. That's what the bid waiver is for. Even though we're not having to approve the amount they're doing within their current budget, I just want to let the town know that we had a discussion with the Administrator Emergency Services concerning the fact that we can't wait a year and hold a billable amount, basically away from the council and the finance portion of the town, and allowing this to linger. There may have been things we could have done a year ago to demand it under the warranty, but we won't know that. So, I will be having a discussion with our Finance Director to make sure that our policies are, I believe our policies are to cover this, but then to make sure that that policy is reiterated to where the department has to understand that as soon as they have a due bill, a bill doable, they have, a bill due, they must submit that and make sure that the town is aware, even while they're going through the process trying to seek reimbursement or compensation for, from the company that's performing the work or from the insurance companies.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Caporti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Land use?
I got one more.
Number 11.
Make a motion to adopt an authorizing resolution, Emergency Management Performance Grant Program is contained in the draft dated December 4, 2014.
Second.
Discussion.
Briefly, this is a grant that we apply for each year that offsets the part of the Administrator Emergency Services salary as his function and as the Emergency Management Director. There is discussion on, in the file concerning a 50% town match. That is already included in the budget. It's incorporated his salary. This is reimbursement part of his, part of the salary. So, there's no additional funds required. The outlay's already budgeted.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, call the roll. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caporti?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Dombrowski, land use?
I make a motion to accept 2.5 acres of open space and the Tom Green Cemetery in part of subdivision number 529. In addition, assigning the district to control of the open space and conservation divisions, and assigning the district to control of the Tom Green Cemetery and Cemetery Division.
Second.
Questions being made and seconded. Discussion.
All right, so this part of subdivision that's on Homestead Road up on the north end of Long Pond, partly includes subdivision, it's normal transfer of deceased property as open space. And as part of the open space division, Cemetery on the left.
Any questions? Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment about this. You may have seen on Facebook that there was one of our Boy Scouts that did an incredible job of marking, putting up a board and marking the grave sites there, which is something that not all of our cemeteries have.
discussion.
Make a motion to reject the contract between the Board of Education and Ledger Administrators Association contract with the period of July first, two thousand fifteen to June thirty, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
This is the one time that we, a yes is a no, and a no is a yes. And, um, we, we basically have, um, well, we have a couple options. The first would be, if we wanted to reject the contract, we would vote yes. If we want to approve the contract, we would vote no. If we want to do nothing, the contract will automatically be approved within thirty days of the filing of the contract. The question we have before us is what is the filing of the contract? And Mr. Cherry mentioned that, um, as, as well, and, and I will talk about that, well, I'll talk about that now, the motion's been made. So, um, one of the things we need to, um, determine, and perhaps the board of ed would be, um, have some ideas here, is, and let me go back to the history of it, and I think part of the reason my email was now considered spam is because of all the copies of contracts I've sent you over the last few days. So, on November fourteenth, the contract that was approved by the Board of Education on, uh, November fifth, I believe, was filed in the town clerk's office. On December ninth, or somewhere before December ninth, we were notified that the health insurance plan, the dental plan, was not included in the health insurance, so that they were making that addition. Now, um, for information, and those that know HSAs and insurance may jump in here and help me a little bit. The old plan had a typical health insurance plan that included dental. The newly created HSA does not specify dental coverage, so that's why it was important to add that, um, into the contract. So, that, um, that new contract was filed, um, on December ninth, and I did forward that all to you. Uh, Mr. Cherry asked the question, was it voted on? I, I don't know, was that voted on?
Um, first of all, um, the PPO and the old contract did not include the dental rider, um, in it. The PPO is a PPO.
But you think the dental part of that plan?
It's a rider, at his own. Mr. Dorsey?
Well, Fred Dorsey, uh, council board, the, uh, dental plan is just that, it's a dental plan. PPO, preferred provider organization, is a, uh, is a health plan. You can have a PPO, participate in the PPO, you can have a health plan, or a dental plan, you can have a dental plan with riders, which is what the town ledger happens to have. You have a full-service dental plan, which is separate standalone plan, and you have riders that are attached to that, depending upon the particular bargaining unit you happen to belong to. You may be covered by different riders, orthodontics, period onyx, and a couple other of those, onyx about gums and, and cats and, and crowns. But the, uh, but they're all separate plans. By law, you have to be allowed to participate in each one of those. If you wanted to, for instance, waive the PPO plan, you'd do that, but you'd still be covered by the dental plan. Those are all things that, uh, but they are separate plans. PPO is just a health plan, just to cover, uh, doctors, hospitalization, surgery, that type of component. A dental plan, totally different. There are some com- components of healthcare that you get in your mouth that are also covered, that are covered under a PPO plan, because they constitute what's called oral surgery. That is a health issue, as opposed to a dental issue. If you're going in for a filling, or a cleaning, or something like that, that is a, is a dental issue, covered by the dental plan, whereas the surgery itself would be covered by the PPO plan. But again, two distinct plans, you don't have to have dental, you can have basic dental, you can have dental with up to, under the Anthem plan, which is what, uh, you're involved in, you can have up to four riders, what they call rider A, B, C, and D. So you have a lot of permutations and combinations there. PPO alone, PPO with a dental, basic dental plan, or PPO, basic dental plan, and riders. You can't have the riders without the basic plan.
Does anybody have any questions on that specific item?
I have still a question.
Go ahead.
Question is, as I was on the floor, it still hasn't been answered in my opinion, is, is the Board of Education vote to approve the contract that includes the dental plan?
Yes, because the dental plan was always included. There was not a reference to it, just like there's not a reference to a lot of things that are covered by the health insurance program, but you've always had a dental plan...
Is the dental plan which was included in the dental, that included the dental plan, approved by the Board of Education, as recently submitted, as of yesterday morning in the town clerk's office?
The answer to that question is no. But that's not the same question as the first one you asked.
Well, I would, it's, I was to do the extension of what the question, the question that the, the chairman has required is, what's the difference between all the plans? The real question was, initially stated, is the way I understood it from the chair, was, did the Board of Education vote on the contract with the inclusion of the dental plan? That's all. That's all I'm asking.
I guess I'm confused, if it was already in there, why we then changed it?
I wouldn't have done it if I were you, but...
Well, I didn't do it.
I, I denied.
So, the question we, okay, and then, the third contract that you received from me yesterday, I think, was the addition of the, or the correction of the monetary versus written...
Stipend.
Stipend. And, um, I guess that was a change, but I'm not sure, did that end up at the town clerk's office? Was that filed?
No, that did not. That was not filed.
Okay. And while, on one hand, it might seem like a minor thing, the interesting thing is, I assumed that the higher numbers were correct, because they were written out, and the lower numbers that were numerical were the error, because when you write a check out, you know, it's always, they say, the bank says, the handwritten one. So I think it's important to have that one filed, since two years from now, who would, you know, we might all not be here, and who would remember that? So I think that's important to be filed. My counselors may not agree with me, but anyway, we'll, we'll decide on what the filing date actually is, and what needs to be filed, as we move, um, as we move farther on. But that was, I apologize, um, to my counselors, that was the reason we've gotten the three contracts. Well, actually, four, because the sec- the first one was the contract, the second one was the marked up one that I requested, and then, um, the other two. So, so that's where the confusion, does that help out a little bit, Mr. France?
Mr. Cherry?
I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Cherry, because you were the one that brought up the number of contracts.
I, I just think it needs to be correct, and, and when, when I find errors in something that somebody spent a lot of time with, it makes me wonder what things I didn't find, because I'm not knowledgeable in them.
Okay. For your, for your information, the one that you reviewed was the one, I believe, that was filed on the ninth?
It was, I, I got one, it's the last one today, that was the full contract out of correspondence, but the one that I spent my time on was the one with the stamp in the town clerk's office.
Okay. Okay, thank, I hope we helped a little bit, or I hope we helped a little. Okay, so, um, the best way I think...
Madam Chair?
Pardon me?
Hey, could I add one other thing?
Uh-huh.
I didn't, I didn't tell you specifically, uh, addressing Mr. Cherry's questions, but there was one item that he brought up with regard to the stipends, that they were switched from a one-time stipend to an annual stipend. That isn't correct either. Uh, they've always been an annual stipend. They would, the years on which they're paid has changed. The word annual may be in there, but the, uh, that has always been the way that stipend has been paid. The longevity stipend is paid on an annual basis. So that, that was not a change in, in the practice of that particular provision. It was a clarification to make it more correct.
Now, I'm totally confused.
I, I just went by what was written on the page.
Oh, I understand.
And it said, a one-time.
It is.
That was corrected to annual. So I assume that that was a change, since it was submitted and tracked changes. Maybe not.
No, it's, it says, it says one-time.
The one, the one-time reference is because it's not paid in twenty-six installments over the course of the year, it's paid in one check. But, it, it is ambiguous, so we tried to make it more clear with this particular provision. So, if we confuse people, we apologize for that, but we are trying to, uh, to make it as, as correct as possible.
That makes a lot more sense.
Okay, so the question should be asked then, how much is this contract cost us in two thousand fifteen, in two thousand sixteen, in two thousand seventeen, and what is the difference from today's contract? I think that's the place to start. What is the total contract dollars cost?
She's flipping her.
That's fine.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
If I could, I, I just wanna go back to something on the insurance. As the administrator of the town's insurance plan, I have to go by the plan document, and it's my understanding, I could be wrong, my understanding that there are two plans specified by Anthem. One is a PPO plan, and one is a HSA plan. My understanding is that the dental plan is included in the PPO, in the plan document, it's not included in the HSA. And if that's the case, then I think there is a difference when the plan is changed. Now again, if someone could show me a different plan document than the one I have, that, so I think that is an important point, it's not a subtle point. Uh, previously, it was specified in the plan, so by calling out a PPO plan, that was included.
So, um, back to the question. We, we would object. We differ on that one.
Um, so, uh, I've not taken this out, but I believe, and Mr. Steinhoff, can you, um, substantiate the insurance savings in the first year?
Yes, do they have the topics?
I thought you did, I thought you were bringing them, but I do, I do have some of them.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, since we have a, a pause here...
Yeah.
May I make a, a comment regarding my involvement in this discussion?
Sure.
All right. I just wanted to, uh, make it clear that I will be abstaining, uh, on a vote for the contract. Uh, my connection to the contract is minimal, uh, almost tangential, but it's, it's real. While it does not affect me financially in any way, as retired administrator, the, um, insurance plans agreed to during the negotiation is the plan that I will automatically be a part of, even though I pay the entire cost for it. Uh, but, as small as that is, it's still, I'm, um, the LAA is my agent in that respect, and therefore I will be abstaining.
Thank you.
Just very briefly, this was a look at the, uh, Alton Gill Plan versus the, uh...
Mr. Steinhoff, can I just...
Yes.
...open with, uh, Chairman Davis, the first three questions of your letter. He sent us eight questions.
Uh-huh.
And I asked Mr. Steinhoff to answer the first three, and Mr. Dorsey to answer four through eight.
Thank you.
If you could allow us to work through them.
That's fine, yep.
So this is a, a snapshot of what the, uh, two plans side by side would look like. Um, given, and we're using numbers from twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen here, because we don't have numbers yet to look forward, but it would be, um, well, so in the first, on the top portion, it's a comparison of the PPO dental plan, uh, the cost, the total cost for a single, a dual, and then, uh, a family, uh, policy, uh, based on the allocation rates, and then the eighty percent of the board is responsible for. The current members of this union are take twenty percent, so, uh, factoring the eighty percent that they would, uh, that the board would have responsibility for, you see, the total, uh, costs would be eighty-three, forty-two for an individual. Moving down to the next section, we're comparing the high dental health plan, uh, along with the dental addition of the dental rider, um, for a, uh, board cost, total cost of seventy-eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars for an individual, if we're following the progression now. The savings then would be five hundred and four dollars per individual in the plan who has the, um, per, per contract member who has the individual rate. The, uh, sa- the numbers of contracts in each of the categories are listed below that of five, uh, singles, three duels, and the three in the family plan, and the, uh, attendant savings for each, I think, multiplying by each of those numbers, the total uncoordinated savings of sixty thousand seven hundred dollars in the first year. And that's projected based on twenty thirteen and fourteen, uh, current figures. And the H, the HP has, has been priced based on a, uh, a look at comparable districts and towns that already have a plan. Uh, obviously, we even have plans for fifteen, fourteen years, so they looked at, uh, Gallagher went out for us, uh, and, or Gallagher went out there and pulled up comparables to give us a, a number to compare against. The group really won't know what those are until Anthem gives us the, uh, the projections on it in March.
Any questions?
Can we ensure questions of degree?
Every, um, yes, um, these questions came in from lots of people, so, um, do we have it, was, are we satisfied with that? Yeah, okay. Next, four through eight, uh, I'd prefer your signature address.
How do you, okay, so, uh, primitive degree?
Thank you. Thank you.
If you like, I can walk you through this information, that, uh, might make it a little...
That would be fine, thanks.
Easier, okay. Uh, with regard to the first document, uh, this is a statewide, um, summary of the negotiations that occurred over the last four years, two thousand eleven through two thousand fourteen, giving you the costs, uh, salary settlements for both administrators and teachers in the state of Connecticut. Again, this is a statewide survey, and it breaks it down on the averages for each of the years of negotiations. So, for instance, you could have a, uh, in, in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, you can have a third year of a contract that was negotiated two years before that, or you could also have a second year of a contract that was negotiated one year before that. So you get, uh, you get different years of negotiations that result in a salary increase in any given one fiscal year. But you'll see here that the, uh, looking at, uh, without, or with increment cost, which is the total cost to the organization, increment cost just means that there's steps in the contract, and people are moving on the steps, that has a cost with it, even if you don't change the salary schedule. So there's an inherent cost for the steps. See that a lot more in teacher contracts than you do in administrator contracts, but there, there are some administrator contracts that have that. With the, uh, when you include the with increment cost, you have the general wage increase, whatever that might be, plus the increment cost to get a with increment cost. And if you s- look at the negotiations for this year for administrators, the average two thousand fifteen, sixteen settlement was two point six six, sixteen, seventeen was two point six four, seventeen, eighteen, two point six one. Over the three years of negotiations for those specific three sets of years, two thousand twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, the averages are a little smaller, two four eight, two five five, and two eight one, in comparison to the agreement that we have before you tonight, which is two point five percent in each of the three years. So you're slightly below the average for the settlements in this year for administrators in Connecticut, and you're below the average negotiated for those three years, over the last three years. So either way you look at it, you've got a little bit of deal here on the salary than, uh, than what's going on in the rest of the state. If you look at the, uh, bottom of the schedule, you'll see teacher negotiations, because if you reject this contract, uh, I don't know if anyone's talking to you about that or not, but if you reject this contract, five days from now, you'll be in our, finding arbitration, because that's what the, uh, teacher statute calls for, when there's a rejected, rejection of a negotiated agreement. So this is, just to give you an idea, the teacher settlements during the last four years also, and the other thing that I would note to you is that, in each of these sets, you will see that, over the last four years, each year, the averages have gotten slightly larger. So we've gone from two thousand eight, which is, is not included here, but that, the two thousand eight negotiations would have been the third year, ending in two thousand eleven. That's when things started to come apart, so to speak, in Connecticut and around the United States, from an economic standpoint, and the settlements started getting lower. But, in the last four years, they trended upwards slightly each year. The next document you have looks at a...
Before you, before you, one question real quick. By settlement, are you meaning the agreement negotiated, or are these arbitration settlements?
These are all three of the ways of getting us there.
Okay.
Negotiated agreements, mediated agreements, and arbitration awards, all, all together.
Thank you.
And, I can tell you that, uh, now, our firm has done a lot of people's studies on the, uh, different ways of reaching an agreement, and what the costs are, and we usually do it over a five-year period of time, and any way we slice that, whether it was five years from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand four, or five years from two thousand four to two thousand, uh, nine, that, that always came up with the same result. Negotiated agreements are the highest, mediated agreements are the next highest, and arbitration awards are the lowest. Not by much, they are within hundreds of percents of one another, but it always works out that way. Don't know why, but it, it is amazing how consistent those numbers are over, and I've been doing this for thirty years now.
Norrisi?
Yes.
I, I just had a question. Um, regarding, um, the two point five percent, um, is that the actual increase after, I don't know how many administrators we currently have on less than a hundred percent, um, in the...
We have three administrators that agree that are in agreement.
So with that, the two point five percent is an average for, you know, all administrators, uh, does that factor in those three people? So, so the actual increase would be, however, slightly...
Slightly, slightly more than that, but, uh, it would note to you that when the administrators agree to the, uh, ability to do the two-year, uh, reduction on hiring, you don't have to do that, and a, a lot of the hirings don't result in that, because you usually hiring, oftentimes hiring experienced administrators, and you're not gonna get them at a discount. But if you do get, get the, uh, the discount, when that was agreed to by the administration, uh, administrators and approved by the board and town, the contract specifically says you cannot count that cost into the cost of the salary agreement, because the salary schedule itself only has one number in it for each position, and that is the only thing that the contract allows you to count as a cost of settlement.
But the de facto increase...
The de facto increase is slightly more.
Wouldn't it be less? If teachers, i- if, uh, several administrators are on less than a hundred percent of the salary agreement, uh, wouldn't that mean that if, if they're getting ninety-five percent, that that would have a, a, an effect on lowering the de facto cost of the...
No, because it...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
No, because the, they're at ninety-five percent this year, next year they'll move to a hundred percent.
Okay.
Okay? So...
I see.
This is always looking a year in advance, and there's gonna be movement for that individual during that year.
All right, thank you.
So, any other questions about the statewide numbers? Okay, referring you to the next document, we just get a little closer to home. Uh, this is in the ledger area. The next document you have looks at
Before you, one question real quick. By settlement, are you meaning the agreement negotiated, or are these arbitration settlements?
These are all three of the ways of getting us there.
Okay.
Negotiated agreements, mediated agreements, and arbitration awards, all together.
Thank you.
And I can tell you that, you know, our firm has done lots of people's studies on the different ways of reaching an agreement and what the costs are, and we usually do it over a five-year period of time, and any way we slice that, whether it was five years from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand four, or five years from two thousand four to two thousand nine, that always came up with the same result. Negotiated agreements are the highest, mediated agreements are the next highest, and arbitration awards are the lowest. Not by much, they are within hundreds of percents of one another, but it always works out that way. Don't know why, but it is amazing how consistent those numbers are over, and I've been doing this for thirty years now.
Norrisi?
Yes.
I just had a question. Regarding the two point five percent, is that the actual increase after, I don't know how many administrators we currently have on less than a hundred percent in the
We have three administrators that agree that are in increments.
So with that, the two point five percent as an average for, you know, all administrators, does that factor in those three people? So, so the actual increase would be however slightly?
Slightly more than that, but it would note to you that when the administrators agreed to the ability to do the two-year reduction on hiring, you don't have to do that, and a lot of the hirings don't result in that, because you're usually hiring, oftentimes hiring experienced administrators, and you're not going to get them at a discount. But if you do get the discount, when that was agreed to by the administration, administrators and approved by the board and town, the contract specifically says you cannot count that cost into the cost of the salary agreement, because the salary schedule itself only has one number in it for each position, and that is the only thing that the contract allows you to count as a cost of settlement.
But the de facto increase?
The de facto increase is slightly more.
Wouldn't it be less? If teachers, if several administrators are on less than a hundred percent of the salary agreement, wouldn't that mean that if they're getting ninety-five percent, that that would have an effect on lowering the de facto cost of the?
No, because it No, because they're at ninety-five percent this year, next year they'll move to a hundred percent.
Okay.
Okay? So This is always looking a year in advance, and there's going to be movement for that individual during that year.
All right, thank you.
So any other questions about the statewide numbers? Okay, referring you to the next document, we just get a little closer to home. This is in the ledger area that the negotiations have occurred. There was one reported, communities don't have to give their name when they report their settlements, so you'll see a couple of boards of education in here that are listed as New London County. That's because those particular boards of education chose not to attach their name to the settlement. And we had one administrator's negotiations during the two thousand fourteen year during this year that is reported, it does not have the with increment cost in the report. So this is a without increment number, that's the only number that they've reported, and this is a very recent settlement. What usually happens is sometimes the boards of ed will be agreeable to publish the number, so people like you that are negotiating have that knowledge, but they haven't ratified the contracts yet, so they don't want to put their name on it at that particular point in time, because that's generally why you have something like that happen. You just have that one that is in the, in the ledger area, and then you see, in all the other of the four years that we're using for comparative purposes, note the towns in your area that were settled, including one ledger administrator's contract in two thousand eleven, three in two thousand twelve, three in two thousand thirteen, and three that have settled this year in two thousand fourteen. And again, if you look at the average in the, in the area towns for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen eighteen, you have two three six, two four two, and two eight five as the numbers, which if you add those three together compared to two point five, again, you're slightly below the sum of the increases, and you know, if you have any mathematicians in the group, yes, you're right, you can't add those numbers together, because they do have a multiplicative compounding effect to them. But the fact is, if you add them together, or you're multiplying, you'll still find that slightly more in the average than what you've settled for here in the two point five numbers. Same thing on the second page, you have the teacher contracts in the area that have settled over the last four years. I did note the ledger contracts in red, just because they're open administrators and the teachers did settle during that period of time. And you may wonder where we got this information, I'm sorry, any questions on those local contracts? Okay, the next two documents are the source documents for this information. This comes from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, they compiled this data and provided to you, I provided you with the most recent negotiations history. These are the contracts that were agreed upon this year across the state, from which I took out the local contracts that were in that group. This also gives you some extra information with regard to health insurance and the way that's being negotiated during these rounds of negotiations, and you'll see in almost every one of these, there is some attempt by the employer to move into an HSA, Health Savings Account. Health Savings Account, understand, is not an insurance policy, it's an IRS regulation that allows you to have a banking account that is not taxed. The, what they would call the HDHP, the High Deductible Health Plan, is actually the health insurance policy itself. Under the Affordable Healthcare Act, you cannot get an HSA account unless it's attached to a high deductible healthcare plan. That's the trade-off, from getting the tax advantage of the, of the HSA, you have to be in a high deductible plan, which is defined as having at least a fifteen hundred per individual and three thousand deductible, annual deductible for family, in order to qualify as a high deductible healthcare plan. In this particular contract, we're looking at a two thousand, four thousand plan, two thousand for individual, four thousand for family, some of you may note, there's no middle number there for two people, under HSAs, there is. Your two-person family, regardless of how that's made up, it's the same as a three-person or a five-person, or if you like my family, a seven-person. But this is the backup documentation for those particular schedules that we just looked at. The next set of documents you see is what we, is an analysis of the various positions in this particular unit, and how they stack up against other administrative groups. If you look at, and the comparative groups we use here, what we call our tier one contiguous, those are the town stats border on ledger, your labor market, so to speak. And if you could, what you have here on each position that's listed in the collective bargaining agreement, we have the minimum and maximum salaries in comparison to those communities that surround you, that show, and they're in ranked order there. So it shows you how ledgerd salaries for administrators stack up against others in the area. And I believe that you'll find that we're right around, or just a little bit above, or a little bit below the average in all these areas. If there's any questions with regard to that, if you want to take a, I'm all looking to put a look at that, if there are any questions, I'll try to address those.
Any questions?
Okay, the next document is the same type of analysis, but it's on a broader basis, and it's on an economic basis. Some of the towns in your area may not be the same economics, or the same economic stature as ledger, but the state has developed, are called BRGs, District Reference Groups. Ledger is in District Reference Group D, and that is a group that the state has looked at, and from socio-economic issues within those communities, they're considered to be approximately equivalent financially, financial communities. If you look at this document, you'll see the same comparison. Each position listed in the collective bargaining agreement compared against all the towns in the DIRG, which is Ledger's DIRG, and it shows you how you stack up at the minimum salary level, based upon your ability to hire. That does not mean necessarily that someone in ledger is going to be hired at that minimum, because that's an optional thing. Most step systems require somebody to be hired in at the first step. In ledger, that's not the way it is. You look at the individuals, you bring them in, if they're very inexperienced, you have the option of bringing them in at a discount, but if they're experienced individuals, they'll usually come in at the level in the that's listed in the salary schedule. But we've compared the minimum and maximum salaries for each position in the collective bargaining agreement, and here, looking at this larger group with similar financial capabilities to Town Ledger, trying to, most of the positions are slightly below the average in the median for, or the median for this particular group. This information is important, because there's six factors that an arbitration panel has to look at when they make a decision with regard to disputes that come to binding arbitrage arbitration of the Teacher Negotiations Act, and two of those deal with comparisons to other similar bargaining units. For administrators, the most similar bargaining units are going to be other administrative groups, the next most similar are going to be other teacher groups. And then the farther you get away from that, non-certified individuals, non-certified individuals outside the community itself, outside the direct labor market, the employer here being the Board of Education, those are going to be given less consideration by your arbitrators. So when we look at these things, the number one criteria that arbitrators have to look at is the ability to pay. Then there's five other factors that they look at, which is the Consumer Price Index, two of them have to do with how other people are paid and the way they get their benefits, and the interest and welfare of the employee group. Those are the things that the arbitrators by statute have to look at. So when you're looking at ledger, for instance, in this particular case, the ledger administrators would be able to show that they are no more than average pay, and in comparison to one group of employees that are slightly below average. So that would be the situation that you would be faced in convincing an arbitration panel as to which way to go on a question that might come before them. The next item is a decade of information with regard to what these particular administrators have done in negotiations for salaries. And I think this is important, because this is not, the one other factor that the arbitration panel has to look at, and that's the bargaining history of the group. The bargaining history between the Board of Education and the administrative group. If you go back to two thousand eight, nine, things were pretty good back then. Remember that two thousand eight, nine contract was bargained in the fall of two thousand seven? And just like in the fall of two thousand fourteen, we are negotiating a contract that will start in July one of two thousand fifteen. So back in two thousand seven, things were pretty good, and there was a three point nine percent increase. The next year, there was a three point seven five percent increase, and the next year, there was a three point seven five percent increase, but the economy changed. The ledger administrators agreed, not having to negotiate, not with an open, a contract opening, they came to the Board of Education and agreed to defer that pay increase, and not take the three point seven five percent in two thousand ten, eleven, and they took a wage freeze. They got their three point seven five percent the next year, in two thousand eleven, twelve. Then, when the contract reopened and they were in negotiation, they agreed to another wage freeze. That was in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, followed by one point nine, one point nine percent increases, and go back to those statewide averages that we looked at, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, one point nine, one point nine, all below the average. And now we're going into a negotiated agreement where there's three two point fives on the table, and those three two point fives are all below the negotiated averages. So the ledger administrators, their bargaining history is not going to show that they have been a difficult partner with the town. They may or may not agree with what they make, but in the marketplace, they're valued on the average or slightly below average, and they have been cooperative with the town in the past, so the bargaining history is going to be good. And lastly, you have the same kind of analysis that we did with regard to salaries, of the existing group, we did an analysis of the insurance programs for the existing group. The first document that you have coming up with the orange highlighting on it, deals with the tier one comparison group, those groups, those towns that are right around you, in close proximity to you, and the second group goes to that DIRG group, groups with similar financial positions. The two thousand four thousand HSA, HDHP program that the, that the administrators agreed to, and they agreed to that with no hassle, that took about thirty-five seconds to resolve the table. They knew, and indicated, they knew that that was coming, and that they were willing to move in that direction. That was helpful, because usually I spend about three days in negotiations just talking about insurance, and it gets, it gets old. But if you look at that program, it's what everyone is trying to get to. Now, right now, that's where you want to go, and the administrators have agreed to let you go there. So I think in this particular negotiations, you could hope for more, you could always want more, I would keep asking until everybody says no, but the fact is that the things that you've got in this particular agreement are something that most boards of ed are looking for, and that you're trying to, trying to achieve in negotiations, and you were able to achieve it. Able to achieve it without going to binding arbitration, which a lot of towns had to do, and you've been able to achieve it, a participation rate of fifty percent, the deductible participation rate, which is a lot less than many communities had to do in order to get these programs in. A lot of communities, some communities that started this two, three years ago, were doing a hundred percent of the deductible, just to get the HSA going. Some communities are still at seventy-five, sixty and seventy-five percent of the deductible, because that's all they've been able to negotiate down to since they started out at a hundred percent. These people started right in at fifty percent, which is where the insurance companies, the insurance companies got a little jaundice, they came out with the HSA program, they said this is going to save you folks money, because it has a consumer, consumer application to it. Paying the deductible is the consumer application, there is no first dollar coverage in an HDHP. Every penny that is billed from hitting one up until the time that you admit your deductible, you have some participation in, as the consumer, you the employee. PPOs do not have that, they have a whole series of upfront payments totally by the insurance plan. That's what this was, that's why this was considered to be a good change by the insurance companies, but then employers were coming in saying, we'll pay your deductible, because we want you to come into this plan, it will save us that much money, that we'll pay the whole deductible for you, and the insurance company goes, whoa, whoa, that eliminates the consumerism, we can't do that, because the whole idea here is the employee is always participating in the cost of his health benefit. The administrators do more part than we do, they're funding half of it upfront. So, all in all, certainly if you have any questions, be glad to answer them. If you have any questions about HSAs and how they work, I'd be glad to answer that. It's one of the things that I tried to do when I started negotiating these about fifteen years ago. I went back into follow-up courses that are necessary to sell life insurance and health insurance, and not because I was going to sell them, but because I needed to. But the other side brought in their experts, I needed to be able to tell if they were telling me the truth or not. So I do have a little bit of background on those things.
So, this has all been very helpful, but in terms, in terms of process, were you to this discussion a long time ago, rather than the night we're supposed to be voting? And I think that's where my initial concern was. We have, I can remember sitting here with Jim Diaz, having these kind of discussions in executive session as the contract was being negotiated. I can remember Dr. Verner and Mr. Swatz, Peter Swatzberg coming and having, remember Peter Swatzberg?
Oh, sure.
And having these discussions with the council that was on the other side, prior to the night we voted. We've not had these kind of discussions the same night as if we were expected to vote. And so I still have my, well, before I ask my first question, which was how much does this contract cost in two thousand fifteen, and two thousand sixteen, and then two thousand seventeen, and what difference, and I know Kathy is working on that for me, but that was the number I wanted, but anyone else have any questions?
I just have one. The cost of going to arbitration, you know, what the financial, what from the town would be?
Well, when you phrase the question like that
Let me just say
What the cost of arbitration is?
Right.
The cost of arbitration is going to run you somewhere between fifteen thousand and forty thousand dollars, depending upon the number of issues. If you reject the contract, and that means anything that the administrators wanted to put back on the table, they could, not saying that they would, in fact, in most situations with a rejected agreement, what occurs is that the union comes in with a rejected agreement. It's very, it's an uphill battle at that particular point in time, because if you look at those factors that the arbitrator has to look at, or the arbitration panel has to look at, it's very hard to say, here's two people that, or two groups that sat down for four months and came up with an agreement, taking these things into consideration, and why should we change it? So the burden is, is difficult there, not impossible, but difficult.
Any other questions?
Just on that point, about, I don't know, twelve, thirteen years ago, the council did in fact reject an administrator's contract, and my understanding is statute may have changed. And my understanding is statute may have changed, that you don't, you go to arbitration, but it does not prevent the parties from sitting down, mediating issues. You're not forced to go to arbitration.
You're not forced to go to arbitration, but under the statute now, and I'm not sure exactly what year it was, but under the statute now, if you were to reject the contract tonight, five days from now, you're in arbitration. And once you get into arbitration, you appoint an arbitrator, you have five days to do that, appoint your arbitrator. Within five days, arbitrators that are appointed by the two parties must select neutral. Once the neutral is selected, between five and 12 days after the neutral is selected, you have to have the first arbitration hearing, and the arbitration hearings have to be over in 25 days from the first hearing. And they don't grant any extensions. I've been in two teacher arbitrations where after the first arbitration hearing, the neutral arbitrator had a heart attack. And they expedited transcripts and sent out another arbitrator to get things done in 25 days. There aren't any extensions.
Or do you have any questions? Yes.
I've got one question on this sheet here.
Yes.
So you recognize it.
Is that the DIRG one or the...
That is the, no, not the DIRG one.
The local?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Far right under the notes Cadillac tax language proposed.
Yes.
That means that's in this contract that we're working on?
Yes. We put a provision in the contract, I don't know if you're familiar with what we all in the business call Cadillac tax?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. In January of 2018, there's a tax that will be levied based on the current statute that says for a family plan, anything over $27,500 in cost for your plan, will be taxed at a level of 40% of the difference between your actual cost and the 27.5 number. That's a relatively substantial penalty. The question is who pays it? We negotiated a provision in this agreement, hoping that the law will change, but knowing that right now, it reads as it does, we negotiated a provision that said in 2017, if the Board at its discretion feels nervous about this and that maybe a tax is coming on, that we can reopen the contract to discuss just the issue of insurance.
I think that's important, given that 78% of the insurance costs are Board of Ed costs on the town's back. I think that that one is really important.
As did the board. And that's something, I can tell you now, that a lot of people are trying to get in negotiations, and the unions are very adamant about not giving it. Of the dozen negotiations that I've indirectly involved in this year, only three contracts end up with that language in there.
Yes.
So since we're self-insured, the value of the plan is determined by, is that determined by the allocated rate?
Yes.
And do we know what the allocated rate of our plan is?
Yes, they do have the stats on that. I don't have the cost figures up here. They do have the cost figures on your current allocation rate and what the projected one is. But most people, you know, if you, right now, they're trending at 8%. That's what the agents are basically telling us. I don't know if you ever heard anything differently or not, but in all the negotiations I've heard this year, eight's been the lowest number. So you've got to look at what that current rate is and put four eights on top of it in order to get to 2018.
Any other questions? Yes.
Yeah. Just on the HSA, I understand that's where things are trending if you look at local communities. Some have been doing this for a while. From our discussion with Lindbergh on that, which we had not too long ago, the jury's still out on the amount of the savings. You know, there's a feeling that the savings, of course, you're always subject to the claims, which is the unknown. That's something you can't factor in here. Really, the issue I have here is that we are in the process of negotiating five contracts with our town unions, and much of this information and the fact that we were going this way would have been nice to know early on in the process. Not just that, hey, it would be considered, but where we were going, because we were already in negotiations. We thought it was something that we put some language in. We're trying to get some language in to look at, you know, opening it up in the future. But, you know, if we had gone forward, if there truly is savings here, we should have had that understanding and moved forward together, and we really didn't have the opportunity to do that. And it's too late really for all but one of our unions right now.
Well, this is a, this is an item that was discussed with the bargaining unit and with individuals that are representative of the county. At one point, we were told by the town, "You can't do this. It costs too much money." We were instructed not to put the item on the table. And we had to kind of argue a little bit to be able to put that on the table, and I was a big pusher of that. So this is not something that was hiding under a basket anywhere back in August and September.
Again, about the process, had we had the meeting that we've had in the past, that would have been the time to have discussed that. And so I think what you're going to, I think the sense you're going to end up hearing here at the end is it's the process we're more concerned, no, I don't want to say more concerned with, it's the process we're concerned about because we haven't had any opportunities to have these kind of discussions.
The process, and you know, I'm not saying it's anybody's fault or anything like that, but the process is something that is fixed in the statute. You know when it's going to be. It's going to be in August of any year that there's a teacher or administrative contact coming due. And I know that those things have happened here before. There was not one this year, but I don't recall anybody saying, "No, that we're not going to have a meeting," but...
Well, in the past, the Board of Ed has let us know.
Yeah, okay. And that's understandable, and certainly that's something that can be easily corrected.
So that's the prospect issue. So now I want my question.
Chairman Davis?
Yes.
I did not bring Mr. Laship's number this evening. I didn't see that in your question, so I didn't bring it with me. I will get it to you in the morning.
Okay, I'm not prepared to vote on a contract without knowing the numbers. Okay, so let me, let me ask my counselors, what date should we use? Where are you comfortable with as the date where the 30-day starts in terms of filing of a contract?
Yes.
I want to comment too quickly about the process. This entire process, to me, has seemed very elusive and unprofessional. When we receive correspondence that says the lawful process can be ignored because there's no penalty, I find that very disappointing. And I would suggest that there is at least one penalty, and that is a loss of credibility. I've been very disappointed in this process. Having had no input, as Chairman Davis said, until the night that we're supposed to vote, I find it very discouraging. And that is not a reflection on the end result, but it is very definitely a statement about the process.
Help me with the date we want to use in terms of filing of the contract.
For me, this contract hasn't been filed. Superintendent said it hasn't been filed with the town clerk. So I would say the date is effective after the Board of Ed votes on the revised contract with the changes that are in, and it's filed with the town clerk.
That's what we got today, right?
The one with the latest change has not been filed with the town clerk, so therefore it's not official. We couldn't vote on it anyways, having it filed with the town clerk. So I would say, my recommendation is that the Board of Ed vote on it, but the minimum has to file with the town clerk before we can take that.
If we were to, I assume we're talking about a tabling?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we reject it, five days later, we've got something going on.
Correct. Let me just say this, because I feel like I need to say this. I'm a rules follower. Maybe it's because I went to Catholic school for 12 years, but I'm a rules follower. And for an elected official to suggest that you don't have to follow the law because there's no penalty imposed is really disturbing to me. And again, I think you made a great point. We're not upset, I'm not upset about the end result. I'm upset by the process and to be told in a letter that there's no penalty imposed under the law so we don't have to follow it is very upsetting to me. You know, it's funny because, I mean, I have, you can see this piece of paper with the letter, it has a pushpin mark in it, because I have this little arm like bulletin board above my desk. And my initial reaction was that everything that comes up from now on, I'm going to ask the question, "Well, what's the penalty?" But you know, I'm a rules follower. So while that was my initial action, my initial reaction, that's just not me. So when you have two groups that are trying hard to work together, and one of them is going to follow the rules, but the other isn't going to follow the rules, that makes it kind of difficult to get anything accomplished. So I will end on that, and at this time, I would like to make a motion that we, I would like to table this motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. There's no discussion. Roxanne, would you call the rule?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cramp?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Well, I think my abstention should be for this as well.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one abstention.
Motion.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Actually...
Yes, please, and thank you for coming.
Oh, no problem. The, I just wanted to make this clear to everybody, because there's a third party in this process, and that's the Administrators Association. And the provision that you were talking about with regard to having the meeting 30 days prior to the commencement of negotiations, the reason that's not enforced is because that would be a burden on the union. You know, the town and the board just decide, "Hey, we're not going to meet." And then, they can negotiate all they want to, and it doesn't matter because we didn't have a meeting. That would be an unfair thing for the union. So the Labor Board, who is the group that decides these issues, has said, "You have an opportunity to meet. That's what the statute provides for. If you don't utilize that opportunity, you can't penalize the union for that." And then, second is because you have this third party, regardless of how you may feel about when the contract is filed, that party may not agree with you. And again, it'd be the state labor board that makes that decision. I'm not saying that you table this contract.
Well, actually, I would be very happy if the first contract counts, and I'd be prepared to vote right now because there is no dental insurance in the first contract as far as I'm concerned.
Davis said it will help you with a bit. You've heard of past practice before. I know you've heard of past practice.
It's not the same, it's not the same policy.
It, well, it is. But the bottom line here is that the union has a say in this. All I'm telling you is table it, get the information that you need to make a decision, but don't like, because you don't want to end up in next October, because that's about the time the state labor board will hear this, finding out that you were wrong and that the contract really was approved because you rejected it 30 days.
Let me ask you this. Would you think it would be the right thing to do for a town council to vote on a contract that we don't know how much it's going to cost?
Mrs. Davis, I just told you, don't, you know, absolutely, table the motion, get all the information that you need. I'm just telling you that the union may decide that the December 2nd date or December 9th date or whatever that date could be is the one that they want to take to the labor board. So if you can get your information and make your decision...
30 days would be...
January the 2nd or January the 1st.
No, 30 days from the day you file the contract would be November 14.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it would be December 14. We are not meeting before December 14.
Okay. I just want to make the point that there is a third party out there. People that actually make the legal decision as to when the contract was filed are in Weather Steel, let's say, Water Labor Relations, and...
I don't believe the contract filed was signed.
If it's not, then it's, it's not, I don't know.
I believe that we...
No, I just, you know, I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you for coming, and we appreciate all of the information you provided.
No problem.
Thank you.
Comment?
Yes.
If I may. I know that when we sent out the budget letter to the mayor and to the board, I'm wondering, it sounds like two kids at a dance who want to dance with each other, and the other one doesn't ask, and they just never get together. Can we have as part of the budget letter, some request for that meeting, just to make it official? When I hear that nobody said no, I take that to mean that informally or formally, it wasn't an actual request made, even though we have an expectation of it. Would it be much to expect to just include...
Well, I can ask right now. 30 days before we go into teacher negotiations, we expect to have a meeting.
And that's a standing request?
It's always been.
It would be considered past practice.
Well, that's fine.
The issue, the reason the statute doesn't provide a penalty is, as the attorney stated, they cannot hold the bargaining unit hostage for the fact that the Board of Ed, in this case, the Board of Ed and the town council didn't get together. So, but you're talking about two elected bodies within the town, the past practice has been. So that's the expectation of that.
But is there an understanding about who requests the date?
Well, I don't know what 30 days prior to some date is.
The challenge is the Board of Ed is establishing, the negotiating committee of the Board of Ed is establishing a timeline for negotiations.
This is the head of the State Department of Education, and every July, all the superintendents in the state are sent a letter with the date, with that 210-day date on it, and the mediation date, which is 165 days, and the arbitration date, which is 135 days prior to the budget submission date. So that's a public document that is available every July for the forthcoming fall negotiations, sometimes summer negotiations. Some people actually start negotiating about July the 10th. But that is available every year.
Right, but that's guidance. That is not the actual date of starting negotiations by the Board of Education. It is guidance and recommendations on when they should start.
But the statute says 30 days before the 210th day, not 30 days before the first negotiation session.
Got it, I understand.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so when is that date?
It depends on what your budget, the budget submission date is determined by the town. That's reported to the State Department of Education in the EDOO-01 report, which is submitted in August or September of each year. And there's just a little blank in there. What's your budget submission date? And you fill it in. So whatever it is, that date that you folks require the Board of Education to submit their budget document to you for the forthcoming fiscal year, that's the day.
210 days.
And then 210 days reported.
Okay. I'm just going to suggest that we and they figure out what that means for us and try to, you know, make an appointment for a meeting well in advance so we won't have to consider ourselves as if we're remembering to do it while negotiations are going on.
Okay, so we did vote to table, correct?
Yes.
Last item, we will move the discussion on items for the, our new state representative.
Suggested proposals by our...
Anybody have any?
I talked to Mike earlier about doing something in VR.
I talked to Mike earlier about doing something in the MBR, trying to get a little more flexible. Tom Reynolds started a while back, and maybe Mike can pick up that football. Yeah. Beat him up a little bit.
Yeah, I know that there's been ongoing discussion on the MBR, mostly at the municipal level, I don't know if there's been really anything at the state level or the legislature being dissatisfied, shall we say, with the way the MBR has been. And I haven't heard any discussion, I'll certainly look at it. If there's any dissent by the education committee, we're under the same air. I mean, the biggest thing that I see in the MBR is the cost for students, by which the only is allowed to reduce costs, because there's very little language in the efficiencies, and that's one of the challenges. When you start quantifying, how do you quantify efficiency and incentive on it as that in order to, yes, I think the MBR is something right for review.
Anyone else?
Right here.
Yes.
I think I can speak for four of us, and I don't know what committees you'll get on or anything like that.
I don't know to wind it.
I think I can speak for four of us when I say, when I say I think we'd like to see defunding of some of the more onerous gun law regulations.
Yes, sure.
Just in parallel with this, the Council of Governments is also putting together their list, the Legislative Committee is putting together their list, and it has a lot of the same things we've had on there in the past. Publishing of notices in the newspapers, which was, had a lot of support, and then was the newspaper lobby really killed that. And then, you know, some other things, but I'd like to, you know, I know the MBR and education funding and full funding of special education, things like that, have been repeatedly brought forward, but, you know, there are just some little tweaks, and maybe it's some of the smaller things that are more realistic. For instance, the town struggles intensely with things like unemployment and workers' comp. You know, the Labor Department, which was just mentioned by our attorney, you know, is truly the labor department in the state of Connecticut, and it is absolutely incredible what the towns have to pay, and with the circumstances they have to pay under. So that would be one, you know, just getting some fairness. The second thing is, it kind of relates to what Council Eichelberg said, and that is, the hog is somewhat convinced, I'm fully convinced, that the government is really run by the bureaucrats. You know, the things that are getting us is all of these mandates that come out just from state agencies. It doesn't come from the legislature, it comes from state agencies. You know, they write a new, you know, the latest one is towns should be required to go pick up all their leaves. You know, this is, these are real things that come out from a bureaucrat. It doesn't go to the legislature. Nobody, nobody screens that to say, what's that gonna cost? And so maybe we need to look at some of the smaller things that are coming along and attack those. We might be more successful, certainly. The funding issues, the budgets, to a certain extent, you know, they are what they are, and then there's gonna be, you know, a mad dash for whatever money there is. I certainly appreciate, I'll just like to add my appreciation to Council of France for all he did supporting me and the initiatives in the town. And also would encourage him, as I've encouraged in the past, to form liaisons, not necessarily by party, but by region, and maybe by towns. You know, the small towns in Connecticut are grossly outnumbered, but if the small towns get together, you can do some incredible things. And so, some thoughts.
Anything else for Mr. France?
First of all, the unemployment, was the town hit with the assessment that the private businesses were hit with to make up the bankrupt unemployment compensation count that was taken in 2009, do you know?
I can't speak to that. What I'm talking about is the fact that we have employees who filed for unemployment who clearly, clearly, and logically, and according to the law, should not be eligible for unemployment.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, you have your, you have your hearing after some period of time that the employee's already gone, you have the hearing, they, you know, they deny the town's request, and then you've got to appeal it. Well, it's only 26 weeks, I mean, by the time you finish your appeal, and you don't get unemployment money back, you know, so the deck is completely stacked against the towns.
Anyone else?
You're in the minority, and I think I mentioned this before, and it's not a, it's an unpleasant place to be, because you really don't have a lot of influence, especially in the beginning. But I strongly suggest that you try to establish relationships with the, we used to refer to them as the delegation. Those are the people from southeastern Connecticut, and there are some new, new names on there, and you can handle regional issues in a nonpartisan way, and it works out very well, but you have to keep fostering this relationship.
Delegations meeting Monday.
Oh, good.
Monday morning.
Good, good.
We already have that set.
Good.
This one's more on a state level, Mike, but you should take note of it anyway, is that with the, with the use of so much technology now, I've been in several state offices in Hartford, we've got five people working in 6,000 square foot offices. Horrendous amount of wasted space. They need to give back as much of that surplus space as they can, consolidate departments. An example of it that you would know is Department of Consumer Protection for real estate licensing. There's nobody in there. There's six people working in 6,000 square feet, and that's just one department.
To consolidate the office footprint.
They can go to consolidating offices of departments that are, their footprint is ridiculous up there right now. Another one, it's gonna be a very steep uphill battle, is getting, I'm in favor of regionalizing the Pequot Fund, but the way their formula works is ridiculous. It does not provide adequate funding for the impact that the host and the near-host towns feel from the casinos.
In the beginning, the formulas for that was based on population, so we didn't...
And that's why, yeah, Bridgeport gets a nice good chunk, and...
And they get no impact. And just to follow up on that, every year since, I call it the Tom Reynolds Bill was put in, which finally gave us the, well, it includes the reservation in the formula, which is what we really wanted. For some reason, the numbers always come down wrong, and Ron McDaniel and Marcia are all, you know, he from Motville, are always trying to work with, you know, and the, to get the right numbers. For some reason, they always seem to forget about that extra kick that we need, and we spend a lot of time trying to make sure we get the right number.
I would just mention the one that doesn't ever go anywhere, but Town Council itself...
She gonna give me windmill tilting?
No, the one that's publishing, publishing things in the newspaper. Who reads the newspaper? Well, Mike does.
You're a dinosaur.
But, you know, some clarification on what publishing it means. I think we were talking about that.
We're working on that. Our town clerk, at my request, has started looking in the state statute for the words "public notice," and then the words "public notice in a newspaper." And in fact, it's two different things in places. Some things say "public notice," some say "public notice in the newspaper." I'm gonna tell my staff tomorrow to make sure that they know whether or not it's required. There's a town around here that has a bulletin board in front of their town hall, and that's their public notice. We use the bulletin board in the town hall, and we're gonna start to do that. For instance, this contract, it says "public notice," doesn't say "in a newspaper." That comes from our charter. Our charter requires certain things, like a town meeting, puts in there, you know, in a newspaper, maybe we ought to change the charter. But we're gonna look from now on, anytime we publish something, make sure we have, it says in statutes, in the newspaper.
You remind me of the charter. The one that, again, didn't go anywhere, but, you know, I keep bringing them up, eventually they will, that you can make a change to your town charter without going through that whole one-year process. If it's little, you know, little changes, like to change something like that, so, because right now, any change in the town charter, you have to go through that big process. I don't know if you, that was, that was entered as a bill, I think a year ago, where minor changes to a charter would require you to establish a charter revision petition.
Did it pass?
No.
She wouldn't be talking about it if it passed.
That's right. Anyone else?
I have, well, I've already dropped the mic about this too, right before the letter also, because in part, the 30D statute is concerned. As my opinion, look at maybe modifying that statute, like a true, put sort of minimum density, I think 30D for affordable housing, fulfilling a three-bedroom apartment, three apartment house with one affordable housing, doesn't really do much for the head percent of water, so have some minimum density of, you know, 10 units or something like that for affordable housing. And also, the one place that we can kind of get away from the fair housing is the restricted communities. So, well, the other thing I have to look at is possibly having some restrictions on these restricted communities that are already established, you know, because you're allowing it to a affordable housing, you know.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
No, no, we have to cancel.
One more motion.
You have to cancel.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, who can make that motion to?
I can make that one, too. So I don't, so I don't have to show up to another meeting?
That's right. Oh, maybe we shouldn't cancel it.
Make a motion to cancel the Town Council regular meeting in December 24, 2014.
Second.
Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the rule?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrawton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
And now?
And now?
Push for adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.
You? Well, that was special. That was not one of our shortest meetings. We have worked with this.
Yeah. Mike, what's your time?
Tech clock's on.
When I get up, if I'm out to walking, I'm trying to... My blood pressure's...
Yes, I heard that. Yeah.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right, Cap.
Merry Christmas.
Have a good day, folks.
Take care, Cap.
But you know what?